Can you dig it? Can you dig it? Can you dig it? All right, it's your boy Sinister One broadcasting live from the city of champions. You were watching the booth and I had some technical difficulties. A key frame issue during the live and they crashed the whole OBS restream. So I have to look into that error report and see it looks like it was some type of key frame issue. Um, while the show was going out live, so we're just going to take it from the top. Um, again, let me just get into my sponsors real quick here. Uh, Michael Douglas, Bredo, M D B Electronics. Uh, if you got a controller that needs to be fixed or drifting, that's the guy you gotta go to and send your Xbox control out back to gaming in twenty four forty eight hours. The Anna Marie, my music everywhere. Her music's all over the place. Four hundred ninety four thousand streams available now. It's personal. Blacklisted is the new project. Tactical Target Systems. That's where I get those zombie targets from. That you see me at the range with. And then I love boston sports dot com. Those are those shirts. Marlon Williams. Check about South Shore Plaza. And then we've got under uh Kimberly Anne empowerment photography ladies. If you want to take some pictures for a loved one or a special person in your life. She'll make you feel comfortable enough to reach out to her, get those pictures taken that you thought you would never take. And then Underwatch Protective Services, Daryl Smith, reach out for him for any type of uh protective services you may need as you see there. And then again, thank you everybody for coming out to Brockton Beer Company last week. Shelley on the left, she took home the runner up prize for karaoke. You are the star karaoke, then Teresa. And um Lucy took home the duo. They split the fifty dollars. They they won the contest. On Friday night, so I want to thank everybody for coming out. This is becoming a nice, family friendly, fun event in the city of Brockton. Please spread the word. Please let people know. Every first Friday, we're down there. We've got some type of theme going on. So big ups to them. Big shout out to Kevin Tocchi of W A T D. He received the official citation. From Mayor Sullivan um on Monday night. So big, big shout out to him. And then Moses Rodriguez has come out. He has announced that he is running for mayor in twenty twenty five. He will be making the official announcement. At Club Venue, Venue seven two seven on March twenty first. And in the upper left hand corner, you've got this guy in the upper left hand corner, my man Jamal. He is running for Brockton City Council Ward Six. The funny thing is, is I saw this guy back in December and we we booked this interview. Pretty much back in December when I saw him, just before the New Year's. Um, he said he was gonna be, you know, making some type of announcement. There were some things he was gonna talk about. And I was kind of feeling like maybe he's going to be announcing that he's gonna be running for mayor. But now that we see that Moses is throwing his hat in, I've got to ask you, were your original plans, was it originally gonna be mayor? Or was it gonna be Ward Six Council from the get go?
Hi Keith, thank you so much for having me on the show. I'd like to say hello to your audience. My name is Shemal Braithwaite. And I'm a resident here in Brockton. I love Brockton and I want to make Brockton a great, wonderful, beautiful city every day of the year. And one way I can contribute is by running for city councillor for Ward Six. Um, to answer your question, Keith, I had always planned on running for Ward Six. And the reason why is that I I always wanted to demonstrate to Brockton that I can improve. My community uh starting at a local level and I want to start in Ward Six and and if I can demonstrate that I can add value to residents here in the city of champions and Ward Six, then hopefully one day, you know, we can evaluate, you know, the environment at that time, but it starts at at the ward level.
And for those who don't know, I want you to be able to explain to people. Ward Six and what area that represents when you're talking to the city of Brock.
Yeah, sure. So Ward Six is the most northeastern part of Brockton. Uh, we are home to a train station, uh North Montello uh M B T A train station. Uh, the the northeastern part of Brockton borders Abington and Holbrook. And uh it's a very special, beautiful place. It's mostly residential. Let's say it's ninety five percent residential. Community and the kind of place where people go to raise a family and uh send their children off to schools. And so that's why it's so important for me. That starting with schools, one of my very first priorities is that I want to improve school lunches, school lunches and school breakfasts. And let me very, very specific what I mean. On Friday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty five, um, the Massachusetts. Department of Elementary and Secretary Education received a notice uh from the federal uh agency, U S Department Agricultural. That they'll be cutting uh twelve point two million dollars that was expected uh that was gonna be, it was gonna fund what's called a Northeast Food for Schools. Program in Massachusetts, which was gonna help support school lunches so that they're healthy and develop relationships with local farmers. Now that money's not gonna exist. Now what's interesting is that during that press conference, the governor was asked. Um, will the state supplement that money that won't be provided by the federal government? And the governor's question, you know, response was, are you kidding me? Which makes sense, you know, because it's not just that program. There's many programs that are gonna be cut that we're not gonna receive funding for. And so that's a big concern. So I want to step in as a local resident, running for city council for Ward Six. To promote that in Brockton, I think that we should provide free lunches, free lunches and free breakfasts for all students. It doesn't matter what your income level. It's for all. And I, and very specifically, I want those lunches to be better lunches, lunches and breakfasts that children look forward to having. Uh, before they're going to school, so they make them more anxious to be at school. And also, this is something that can solve food insecurity. For every student that goes to Brockton Public Schools, because they know they're gonna get a trusted quality meal. So I want to improve the quality of school lunches and breakfasts. One and two, I want to ensure that all lunches and and breakfasts are free for all Brockton Public School students. And the way we're gonna fund this, a lot of people might say, well, Jamal, where are you gonna get the money from? Well, let me answer that question for you. Over the past five years, the city of Brockton has collected two million dollars per year on all these dispensaries in the city of Brockton. So in total, the city has collected approximately ten million dollars. However, no one person can articulate exactly how that money's being spent. At the, what has happened is that the money was being put in the general fund and it was just being spent as additional monies as part of the budget, but it wasn't clear. So it's like supporting the overall. Expenditures the city's uh shelling out, but it's, we don't have any specific fruit or outcome for this um new activity that exists in the city of Brockton. So what I'm asking, or I will be advocating for is that we take all that money, all two million dollars each year. And we provide free lunches and free breakfasts for every single Brockton Public School student, which is about approximately fourteen to fifteen thousand students are gonna benefit from this. And hopefully this will provide them with the nutritional health and and quality experience so that when they're in school. They can concentrate and be the best student they can possibly be.
And you know, one of the things I had talked about this on the show, because I was a big, I was a big uh proponent for for dispensaries to open here. And you know, there were some people who were against it. I'm like, look. If these dispensaries don't open in Brockton, they're gonna open right over the borders in the town that border us and we're gonna be losing that tax revenue. And it's nice to see that revenue. Now, the first year of these dispensaries being opened, the the, and you're right, there was, there was so much tax revenue that was raised that it was. It was three times the amount of what they had expected. So that was one of the reasons why it had to go into this general fund the way it did, because they really didn't even, they they got so much money, they didn't even have a budget set for that money when it came in, because it was more than what they realized it, because they only thought they were gonna get like thousands, a hundred thousands of dollars. It ended up being millions, like it is for a lot of these cities and towns that are now getting this windfall. Um, I like that. I like the idea of that because this is one of the things that happened when the Foxy Lady opened up. On the west side of town and when the foxy lady opened up, um, they utilize some of that money that they made that was supposed to go towards the books in the Brockton system, towards purchasing books. Um, so I I like this idea. Um, we've got a lot of dispensaries here in the city. Um, they're all packed. Every last one that I drive by are packed. Fridays, Saturdays, they're packed, they're doing deliveries. Um, Oterra is one of the successful. So I agree with you. I I like that idea. What else do you feel that you that you need to jump on?
Absolutely. Yeah. The next thing I want to make sure that we address is that we need to increase the, we need to increase public safety. And let me explain what public safety we're talking about. Um. I want to increase the safety for children to get to and from school. Right now in the city of Brockton, we have children that when they're walking to school, they might have to walk underneath the bridge that has trash, filth or needles that are drug related or drug paraphernalia. I don't want that exists in their path when they're going to school. So I want that cleaned up. And not only do I want that cleaned up, but if there's even a crack in the sidewalk. That could hinder someone who's handicapped from 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 utilizing that sidewalk. That's a problem we need to address and that's gonna be a priority priority. I want to increase public safety for children to get to and from school. So that means in in um improving the quality and the condition of our sidewalks, our green spaces. Making sure the grass is cut, making sure we don't have needles in there. Brockton, we have a big problem with needles in public spaces. Where children are walking past them on their way to school. That should not exist. So that is going to be a huge priority. Improving the quality of our sidewalks, including ensuring our green spaces are maintained in a quality condition. The key word is quality. And the third aspect of this is increasing the quality of our roadways. In the city of Brockton, our roadways are, I believe, our current head of the DPW stated that ninety percent of our roadways. Are in some kind of condition that needs improvement. And 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 so we need to prioritize that. And the way I want to prioritize that is making sure that in the city of Brockton, we have a citywide pavement management plan. If you go to the city of Brockton's website for the DPW, one of the very first things you'll see advertised is the existence of a pavement management plan. That's used as a method for determining what city projects the city council is gonna improve when they approve the budget in June of each year. However, as a resident, if you want to obtain um access to this plan, no documentation exists. It's like the, if it back in uh January of two thousand twenty, when Mayor Sullivan first came into office. And it was this first quarterly town hall. As a matter of fact, it was this only town hall. But it was called the first quarterly town hall. And I had asked him during that venue. That it does, do we have a citywide plan to improve all the roadways? Because the concern with the roadways is that we have a lot of traffic, traffic accidents in Brockton, one. And two is that our insurance rates and and for insuring a vehicle parked in Brockton is higher than any of the surrounding municipalities. And that's because of the number of incidences that have occurred in Brockton roadways. Now, when I, during that uh town hall, I asked the mayor if a plan existed and uh he consulted with his head of DPW at the time, who had advised it existed. But you know, I followed up every single year since that meeting. And I've never obtained any documentation because no documentation exists. That's a problem. And the thing is.
That would be uh Pat Hill is the.
It would be, and and I'm glad you brought his name up because he's a great guy, really nice guy. It's nothing personally against him, but from a city point of view, the city council. Just approved his appointment for another three year term last Monday, but during, not yesterday, but the prior Monday. And the thing is that if you observe that city council meeting, you'll notice that no city councilor asks any questions about what's the plan to improve our roadways? What's the plan to improve our sidewalks? What's the plan to ensure that we remove snow on sidewalks so children don't have to walk in the streets when they're walking to school? None of your city councillors asked that question before they approved his nomination and that's a problem.
Well, so there's a, there's a couple of things here that that are going on. You know, I follow this a lot and being from transportation to, you know, in Pat Hill does a very good job. It's it's a tough job. Um, but there were, so I told a lot of people, some of the things you can do to help, I've got the C Click Fix app on my phone. Um, but when you see potholes and things of that sort, I tell people to utilize C Click Fix. The reason why I love C Click Fix is because you take a picture, it geo tags your your moment. And then it sends it off to the people in the city and creates this timeline of people to have to respond and to answer. Most of the times when I use C Click Fix on potholes or things of that sort, they're out there. It it creates, it creates a way for people to answer for their jobs, number one. The other thing that I don't, that that has been a problem. In this city that's bugged the hell out of me. And it it's, it's, it's not Pat Hill, it's not. I feel like there is a lapse in communication when it comes to uh street conditions in this city. I've seen many streets in this city on the list get done, get paved, get repaired. And then two weeks later, either National Grid or Columbia Gas comes out and guess what? They tear the street up. To put pipes in or whatever. And I feel like there's no communication when they're scheduling. Of these tasks or these jobs around Brockton, or our streets would be in better condition, because I can name three streets right now that just got paved. But then a few weeks later, they came out and somebody got a water line or a gas line put to their house. Now that gets dug up. Maybe we need to do a plan when the streets get dug up, the whole street gets repaved, not, we don't just pave the area. So I feel like there's, there's a lot more to this problem than people realize. And I feel, I feel like scheduling. Streets when they're getting ripped up and paved. And I know Hot Top, Hot Top has to be ordered at a specific time during the year. But it has to be, this pavement plan thing that you're talking about could coincide with. I would say, I would, and I'm not sure who it would be, I would say that would also involve the city planner and maybe the traffic commission. And say, okay, hey, we've got National Grid coming in, they're gonna tear up Clock Street, they're gonna tear up Crescent Street at this time. Okay. Let's not book this street to get done. Let's wait till they're done. And I feel like the scheduling process is horrible.
Keith, no, absolutely. Keith, you're absolutely correct. And that's a good point that you bring up and that gives just more merit. Around the need to have a large citywide plan that it's readily available for everyone to have access to, including any applicants such as National Grid. When they have infrastructure projects to do, that's something that they're looking at and consulting and and they're consulting with the city. Looking at that citywide plan as a reference so that when they are digging up roadways, the cost of digging up is taking that in consideration as well.
What if, do you know what the, so do you know what the agreement is when a National Grid or Columbia Gas is? Does the job entail that when they patch it up, that they only have to patch up that area that they dug? Is there a way the city can say?
That's a, that's a good question. And you know what's interesting is that at the, the, just like the last Brockton City Council Finance Meeting. There was a public hearing on this very topic where National Grid's gonna install another light pole. And it's interesting, the city council has never asked that question. And so that's a very good point. And so as we talk about this and the condition of the roadways, I think it's important that residents have a representative that's gonna ask those kind of questions. At the right time, before they approve the petition to approve some kind of infrastructure project. But stepping back, I want to highlight that. Um, this state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts received over eight billion dollars from the U S federal government. In order to improve infrastructure projects here in the state of Mass. And what's interesting is that since this money has been received in the city. The city council's never had a discussion with the DPW. During a finance committee meeting where they talk about how much money has the city of Brockton received from this program. What steps can the city of Brockton do to apply for more money? Because one of the big issues in Brockton is that we didn't have sufficient grant writers. And we need grant writers to apply for this money through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Now, this program was a, it was, I think we only had like maybe a five or six year period window where we could apply for this money. And so I know we're near that expiration. I think we might have one year left to apply for this money. I think it's really critical that we ask for, because why? Because in Brockton, we need money. We need money to improve our roadways. But I just don't see the city councils prioritizing this because they're not asking the right kind of questions, such as the U S Infrastructure Act. How is the city of Brockton benefiting from it? Go ahead.
And that's the, that's the problem that I was asking, because all of this money, if we have it, it makes, it it it's not even worth it if you're gonna spend all this money on the road and then have Columbia Gas come in and tear the road up. You know what I'm saying? Three weeks later. So all this. Granted, yes, we can figure this all out, but hey, if we schedule it all crazy, it it it's a, it's a waste of, because I've seen it. I've been in Brockton since seventy eight and it's been one of my biggest pet peeves about the city of Brockton, because I'm like, who the hell plans this? Like, like. I've seen Crescent Street repaved over and then National Grid comes out or DPW comes out and replaces the water lines, the water pipes. It it it's insane.
Well, another observation, and it's in tangent with what you're talking about, is that who in the city of Brockton ensures that we have adequate standards when city services are provided? So for example, when the city of Brockton uh um. Fixes or installs a new sidewalk or curbside, who's there to verify that it's done correctly? Um, for example, um, the curbside, I believe it's supposed to be at least six inches off the roadway. But if you look in Brockton, there's a lot of curbside where it's like three inches, two inches, maybe there's no curbside at all. Once upon a time, I actually spoke to the head of the DPW. Who uh had the role before Pat Hill. And I asked him the question, the same question, like who ensures these, we adhere to these standards? And he was the one who told me that the curbside should be six inches. And uh he he said that he, he didn't give me a direct answer and I actually had asked him, you know, where, where do these standards exist? Because I'm curious to know, is this commonly known for people throughout the DPW who work in this line of work? Uh, because I asked him, what, you know, tell me why would a curbside be three inches? Or why would it, the curbside be non-existent? And he told me that, well, that was just an error. Somebody did, you know, it was an error when they did that. And I was like, wow, I thought it might have been a case where maybe cars are just uh, you know, it's just due to the degradation of the roadway from people uh riding over the sidewalk, but or driving on the sidewalk, but in fact, it's not. It's actually was installed incorrectly. And so the point is that here in the city of Brockton, you know, we need to adhere to standards and we need city councils that are gonna ask questions to make sure that we have standards implemented. Whether it be in the DPW and the application of roadway surfacing or um whether it be ensuring that we have internal controls over financial reporting. To prevent future deficits in the city of Brockton, because right now in the city of Brockton, we're still, we're the city of deficits right now. Um, as of the last Accounts Committee meeting in February, uh, the city, the most senior city councillor. In the city of Brockton, maybe in the history of Brockton, went to Farwell, made an announcement that a letter was received uh by the city from the um Division of Labor Services, where they're advised that the city of Brockton has overspent by three point, I think it's three point seven million dollars of Care Act funds. And uh and the city's gotta pay that money back. Now, no one in the city of Brockton has a direct answer for that letter. But we need to stop the money from missing in Brockton. We need to stop the deficit spending. We need to stop under budgeting like we did with the um Public Safety Complex. Where it's costing us a hundred and forty eight million dollars, but the mayor originally pitched the, the proposals and ninety eight million dollar project. So we need to stop the money from missing, stop the under budgeting and be more effective and wise in managing money. And it starts by implementing internal controls over financial reporting of Brockton. Um, you know, it's surprising, no city councillor to this day can provide you, a resident, a list of internal controls that residents rely on being um, applied by city employees that ensures that money's not missing in Brockton. That ensures that fraud is not taking place amongst city employees, that ensures that we're not spending more than what was approved during appropriation by the city council. And so, and that's a big risk. And I'm here to try and help manage those risks so that Brockton, if we're effective at managing our money and more efficient. Then we're gonna have money left over so we can have free lunches for all students, so that we can have better roadways. Let me give you an example with the roadways. In the city of Brockton, did you know that the city collects a total of approximately fifteen million dollars a year in excess tax? However, the entire budget for the DPW's expenditures is about eight point five million dollars. So my question is, where's the other six point five to seven million dollars? Where does that go? And that's where it's like ambiguous. It's just in the general account. And if I'm the city councillor, I'm gonna advocate that at least seven million dollars of excess tax a year. Goes into improving roadways in the city of Brockton. And so that's where it's right now. The the amount of money spent on roadway improvement is much less. It's, it's gonna be within the budget of the DPW, which we know is eight point five, so.
I'm, I'm biting my lip right now as I, as it's almost bleeding because I pay my excise taxes every year on my vehicles. And you know, excise taxes in Massachusetts is supposed to go to cities, roads and bridges, yet here we are, year after year after year, we're seeing bridges close down, we're seeing bridges falling apart, we're seeing bridges like at the Mass Pike where roof pieces are falling. So I get pissed because, you know. Obviously, this is a statewide problem with excise tax not going to where it's supposed to be going. So that's, that's a, that's a bigger overall problem. It's been a big argument in this state. For the, for the longest time. And um I wish it was something that we would definitely, you know, would take care of. Um. Ward Six, now that also, you guys lost two major businesses up in that area. That's gonna, that's gonna hurt that.
We did, we did.
You lost Stop and Shop and Advance All the Pots went out of business. So you've got two big parcels of land sitting there. Now, did Stop and Shop do the same thing that Shaw's South did years ago when Shaw's pulled out on the south side? They kept, they kept the property so nothing could go there for the longest time. And and it hurt the south side. Is, is, is that building up for sale? Are they allowing that building to just get taken by someone else?
Okay, so the, the property where Stop and Shop once existed on North Montello Street in Brockton. So that existed on a five acre parking lot. And that parking lot is owned by a company out in San Diego, California, and Stop and Shop was the tenant. Now, what's it, now, now what's interesting, looking at that property, is that the tax assessment value on that property has not changed year on year. And the tax rate, the commercial tax rate's actually gone down year on year. So really, the cost of owning that five acre parking lot. Has actually gone down year on year. So what's interesting is that it originally Stop and Shop said that they wanted to leave because the landlord increased the rent. But I'm just curious, like, why would the landlord increase the rent if the cost of owning the property's actually gone down year on year because their tax liability's gone down? Why would, you know, but what's interesting is then, then I guess six months, eight months later, Stop and Shop came back and said. You know, after they said that they weren't gonna leave, then they decided, you know, where they are gonna leave and and so Stop and Shop's completely out of Brockton. So right now, to answer your question, I think it's a free market opportunity. Any business that wants that space. That, that property owner based in San Diego, California, I'm sure they'd be happy to hear from anybody interested in renting that space. Or, you know, offering some kind of proposal, usage of the space. So it's a free market opportunity. And uh for me, I personally feel like we definitely need another grocery store. Um, in Brockton. However, I appreciate that, you know, there are a lot of demands for land. Um, and the city of Brockton is in a great location. Uh, south of Boston and this entire area is a very large economic hub. Um, so I can imagine a lot of people would be interested, but um, you know, what really happens, we'll find out.
Yeah, it's weird because that whole Stop and Shop thing, that went up and down me both sides and pissed me off because, you know, originally they said that, that, that the sales weren't there. And every time I went to that Stop and Shop, it was always packed. The parking lot was always packed. So I felt like, I felt like that they were lying to everybody from the get go. I felt like they just wanted out. I felt like they just wanted out of Brockton.
Yeah.
Um, and wanted to sell that property off for a profit because that, that was a busy Stop and Shop every time I drove by there. Um, there's so much you can do with that property. That's a good parcel of land. That's also a, a trucker route. That Route twenty eight is, is when you really consider it a state highway right there going up, up to twenty four. So that, that's a lot. And then like I said, you also have that Advance All the Pots. That's a big parcel of land there. They're closing out of there.
Yeah. And just to make everyone aware from the public is that um, really as me running for office, I really want to know from residents, what would you like to see there? On that lot where Stop and Shop used to exist? What would you like to see where the, the auto, it was the Auto Zone that went out of business?
Advanced Auto Pots.
Advanced Auto, I, I, I get the two of them confused often, but yeah, Advanced Auto. You know, what would you like? Because if you want something there and you reach out to me or you participate in the city meetings. Then what you want, you can see reflected there as well. And and let me share the potential scenario of what could happen. Um, in absence of residents engagement. What could happen if you, if you engage, you might end up getting a really nice, beautiful grocery store there that you're gonna love, as well as maybe some other shops that you, that you fancy. Or um, or maybe some additional amenities that you might want to see in Brockton, because if anyone really looks at that corner. That corner might be one of the most active economic, most economically active corners in all of Brockton. I'm not gonna go to the details of it on this call today. But it is one of the most, so really, the right kind of business could be very viable, residents can. The right kind of business could be very viable, residents can seize a dream there, but, but the risk is if residents do not participate. I can assure you, and it's, it's not going to be me, but other people, there is a, uh. There, there are economic forces that are going to want to see apartments in that five acre parking lot. And I can.
I was going to say that.
And the thing, and that will happen. And though, when I say the forces, the forces of the market. Will want to make as many apartments as possible. And so re- some residents may not want, um, a higher population base there. So it's really a function of residents input. Because residents can have an influence on the zoning of that parcel of land. And if the zoning is approved. For, you know, it's, it's a function of what kind of use you want. Right now it's, uh, zone is a commercial, I think it's C two. And so you can have a lot of different commercial businesses there, but, uh, there are market forces that could end up making it, um, a residential. And in that, that case, it could be a very large housing.
And they could easily do that because you've got, and they've got, and they've got all the proof there to show why they need to change that zoning. Because you've got a very popular train station there, commuter rail station right there in that corner. Um, you could say, hey, we could, we could put, we could do just like they're doing in Seaport. We can put commercial housing up top and put the storefront in the bottom. Um, there were plans a while back that they were trying to get a Trader Joe's here with apartments on top, but it didn't, it didn't go through. But that corner would be a prime spot for maybe a Trader Joe's or an all, another Aldi's maybe. With some apartments on top. And now you've got some people that are going to take that train, that, that's more people commuting to Boston. At that intersection right there. Now that intersection, you got to look at possibly getting redone because you're going to have that. So yeah, you're right. That is something that right now it's commercially zoned, but yes, it is definitely. Something that if you're a developer, you're saying, hey, I could put apartments here with storefronts and.
Yeah.
And the train stations right there, you've got twenty-four is right down the road. It's, it's logistically.
Yeah.
Great for apartments, that area.
That's right. So, and so for residents, it's really ownership is in your court. Uh, if you live in Ward six or Ward seven or anywhere in the city of Brockton and you frequent that area, you might want to see something specifically. Um, you might want to see something that's kid for children specifically. And so in that case, you might want to advocate for that. And so what I'd recommend is you're welcome to reach out to me. Uh, my name is Jamal Brathwaite. You can reach out to me on Facebook, or you can send me an email at JamalBrathwaite@gmail.com. And, or you, or you can, uh, visit my website at votejamal.com or voteforjamal.com, either one of those websites. Um, you can also call me, that's seven, seven, four, four, two, eight, one, five, two, five. Once again, my number is seven, seven, four. Four, two, eight, one, five, two, five. I also host, uh, I'm the host of the Brockton Residence Forum. Every Sunday from eleven AM to twelve PM, you can attend via Zoom. Um, you can be an active participant, or you can just listen into the call. And the significance of the Brockton Residence Forum is it's an opportunity for residents to discuss, um, Brockton City Council meeting and agendas. And minutes and to reconcile them with resident priorities. And if you see some that should be on that city council meeting agenda, we'll advocate to get them on the agenda as a city priority. So we welcome all to join.
All right. And a couple of questions before we get ready to get you out of here. What's going on Clancy? What's going on Margaret? I see you in the chat. Monkey Ranch Wellness. Thank you for tuning in. Christopher Gagney, thank you for tuning in. Couple of quick questions before we get you out of here. Um, one of the questions I did have for you is ward reps, ward, the ward representatives that, that are elected. I had always thought that ward reps got a list every year for their ward. For streets, for which streets to be done. I thought they were in charge of that. Is that not true anymore?
So I agree. No. So, so that's a great question to bring up. So the way, so the way it works in practice. Uh, during Mayor Sullivan's, because he's the one who has final, the mayor has final sign-off on what roads are going to be improved. Um, e- each year. And so in practice, each, what he does is that each of the ward councillors will receive, will. Put together a list, uh, by receiving input from residents on what roads they want to improve in the ward. And they send that email to the mayor and the mayor reviews it and he'll consider it and say yes to some and to others who might say no. Um, and then that's the process. However, however, I want to highlight this is that. For, for my point of view, I would think that we would want to take a more comprehensive approach. And that's the significance of having a citywide management plan, pavement manager plan is so that. When, when he looks at this, he should, if we have that plan in place, that's a case where the DPW is continuously. Identifying the condition of the changing condition of roadways and ingrading them. To determine the ones that have a higher priority need than others. So that, and, and so that way, the, when the information is presented to the mayor and to the city council, they have that level of detail. Understanding before they approve the budget, but in practice, that doesn't happen. And, but me running for city council, I am going to advocate so, so that we do change the system. So we have more of a citywide management plan and so that the city councillor's input can be taken into consideration with a, a more citywide plan. And that's so that we're not, so that way we're not just piecemealing improvement. But that we're actually doing it in context of a larger plan that's going to help all residents. And be a part of a, a, a goal of modernizing the city of Brockton, because that's why we need to modernize the city of Brockton. And if a utility provider is going to change out a utility pole. Me as a city councillor, I'm going to make sure before we approve that. Um, we approve that request, that we actually ensure they know that they're going to be responsible. For the improvement of the entire roadway in that area. So it's not, it's not a case where they're going to. Dig up some utility line and then all of a sudden give us a cost. We're going to make sure that we hold utility providers responsible. For any, 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 um, improvement needs, uh, for work that's going to be done.
I feel like, I feel like the, just the paving, that one little area is where it now breaks up and now you've got the potholes. And I feel like if you just take that segment, you can easily say, okay, we're going to pave this whole segment. Because when they, anybody who's in the business knows, when they make hot top, they always make more hot top than needed for the job at hand. So when you say you're going to pave this whole area, this area, so we don't have this one strip. I, 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 I think it's kind of a no brainer. And then the last thing I got to ask, if I'm not mistaken, Ward six also. There's another little headache for you, if I'm not mistaken, is that not the area that includes?
That's a little, yep.
The Druckus property, yes. Can you?
So yeah, let me, yeah, you know what? You know, we can address that. So, all right. So in Ward six four. And let me just kind of give a little bit of background information for, you know, your, your audience. So in Ward six, um. Back in this, uh, we'll say in twenty twenty, um.
Was there for the meeting.
Yeah, the city council and the mayor signed off on this and it was the sale of. Um, it equated to about twenty acres that were selling off, but in total, the total project plan now is thirty acres, is about thirty-two acres. That's designated, um, to be, to, to, to build a sports complex. And the current city council of Ward six, Jack Lally, well, his real name's John Lally, but he go, he's also known as Jack Lally. I got to highlight that because on the ballot, you're going to see John Lally, you're going to say, who is that guy? That's the guy we're talking about, Jack. So Jack, um, he promoted the sports complex and that's cool. That's fine. That's great. You know, I'm sure he did it in good, with good intention.
He was a young kid. He was a young kid.
He was a good intention. And we, we love that. We love that. And we want more young people. And that's awesome. Well, in, in, he was eighteen at least at the time because he would have been a city councillor, right? Cause I, you know, to be. You know, to run, you gotta be at least eighteen years old. So what it is, is that, um.
No, 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 no. He was seventeen. He was the ward, he was the youngest ward rep because he, I was at that meeting at the school. He was only seventeen then as a ward rep, as a ward rep.
Are you, are you sure? Are you sure about that?
I believe he was seventeen.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to verify that. Cause I'm in America, I'm pretty sure you gotta be at least eighteen years old, but. You know, either way, either way, either way, I'll be honest, I wasn't around at the time, but I'm very proud. I'm very proud to hear that and that's a great accomplishment. And so.
He was a young kid. He was, he was, he was a go getter.
I love that. I love that. I love that. And I think that's awesome. And I, and I think that's a great example for so many other young people and I, I love that. But in terms of where we are now, is that that sports complex never came into fruition. And what's even worse is now we have an environmental disaster taking place in Ward six. Where now it looks like there's maybe about two to three acres are being used as what looks like it's some kind of rock, rock, rock. Crushing, processing facility that is creating, um, air pollution. For all the neighboring properties, which includes residential homes. And the land that is supposed to be a part of the area where there's going to be this whole sports complex. It kind of a, it, it butts the Brookfield Elementary School in the park area where the kids would be. So I'm very concerned. And I'm not just concerned, we're going to take action on this. Now currently, your city councillors and your mayor in Brockton. What they, what it is, is the, the land was sold in what's called a land disposition agreement. Where the, there were certain conditions and part of the conditions would be the construction of this sports complex. And that agreement had, we've been, the, the developers have been in breach of that agreement for at least the past two years. And as of May of twenty twenty-five, that whole entire agreement is in breach, like nothing was complied to. Now, the big issue in Brockton, the underlying issue, whenever people ask like, why are the roads so terrible in Brockton? Why is it that we're continuously going to deficit spending with the schools? Why is it that there's so many roadway accidents in Brockton? Cause there's one fundamental issue going on, one common issue. The common issue is that in the city of Brockton. Our elected officials are not adhering to the basic rule of law. And let me tell you what that means. In the city of Brockton, we have something called chapter three twenty-four, the Acts of nineteen ninety. That states very specifically, no department head can spend more money than what was approved by the city council. That is a breach of law. It states it very clearly. But the city of Brockton does, hasn't been adhering to that. And we don't have effective, we don't even test internal controls to verify that it, that's taking place. And you can't manage what you don't monitor and you can't monitor your financial condition. If you're not testing internal controls. And in the city of Brockton, underneath Mayor Sullivan, we don't test internal controls. And so that's one example. We're in breach of the Acts of nineteen ninety. We're out of compliance. The city council hasn't corrected the city, hasn't corrected the schools. And that's still an ongoing issue. They're not adhering to the rule of law. That's one example. Another example is when it comes to traffic accidents in Brockton. There is no traffic control measures. The, the, the local police department does not do traffic surveillance. And that's not really a, a problem because the, the police are lazy. That's a problem because the mayor hasn't set goals and objectives. For the chief of police regarding traffic management. And this has been acknowledged by your local city councillors during city council meetings, where the most senior city councillors will say, hey, yeah. In the city of Brockton, there isn't traffic, there isn't traffic control. They have, there, there isn't traffic monitoring. Imagine at the intersection that we were just talking about Keith, uh, the intersection where you have the old Stop and Shop. There's so many traffic violations that take place there every day. Now, I would think a smart mayor would say, you know what? We're going to monitor traffic so that every single, some, somebody, somebody violates a traffic, a rule there. One, they're going to get fined, so that's more revenue for the city. And secondly, you're going to make the city more safer. Because now violators know that the city of Brockton is managing traffic. And we're going to ensure, we're going to enforce traffic rules. And so right now. Um, automobileists in Brockton going in and out, and it's honestly Brockton residents, it could be people are driving through Brockton. But they know that traffic enforcement doesn't play, place in Brockton. So you see all kinds of ridiculous driving behaviors that you wouldn't see in other communities. So we got to, so once again. Another example, how the city of Brockton is not adhering to the basic rule of law. The third example I got to drop on you is this land disposition agreement in the, in Ward six regarding the sports complex. Right now, the developers in breach of agreement, you would think that a good mayor who has a law degree. Who understands real estate agreements would understand that, oh, at this point in time, all he has to do is ask the city solicitor. Send the developer thirty days notice that he's in breach of agreement. What's his plans for a sports complex? And if he doesn't respond back in thirty days, then the mayor should be taking action to take that land back because it's in breach of agreement. But you don't see the mayor doing that. You see him giving an announcement saying he's, he's not running for reelection. Almost like it's the end of his, his service, but no, the, the job ain't done. And right now you have residents in Ward six who are suffering because, because they have, they can't breathe in their homes. They can't open up their windows. Because the dust is coming in from this gravel pit, this, this, this rock crushing mining crushing facility. Which is ridiculous to have in a residential area, especially in a ward like Ward six where ninety-five percent of it is residential. It's residential, it's not even commercial.
I'm federal certified in EMS. I'm federally certified in EMS.
Keith, uh, your volume, I don't hear you right now.
Oh, you can't hear me? Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yep, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm, I'm, I'm certified by the feds in federal environmental management systems, EMS. Uh, fence lines, SWIP plans, all that stuff. I went to Virginia Tech. I did it for the MBTA. I'm now doing it over at Logan Express. Um, for Paul Viva Transportation. That's one of the things that I handle. Um, I've driven by that area in, in, in Ward six. And I'll tell you right now, the way he is operating, if you want to see the difference between a place that's operating correctly and operating poorly and illegally. There is a construction place that is just yards away from him, that has got the same type of setup. They've got all their equipment parked correctly. They've got all their stuff stored correctly. They've got everything marked correctly. They're doing it the way that you're supposed to be doing it for that type of business. Um, this gentleman who is running this business out of there is doing whatever he wants. I've seen drone footage of his property. He doesn't have any fence line protection. Um, the problem here is, is that he's bringing in rocks and dirt and stuff to crush and break up. You have no idea where he's getting this from. You don't know if it's contaminated. You don't know if it's cancerous. You don't know. And he's putting people at risk. So yeah, it's, it's definitely something that needs to be addressed. Um, it has been a big issue and I know Jack Lally got, John Lally, Jack got beat up a lot about this, but like I said, he was a young kid. He was trying to do the right thing and now, you know, so, and I know Michelle Dubois has been involved and yeah.
But once again, Jack, as of this year, he would have been a city councillor for ten years. And let me make it very clear. Let me make it very clear, we're here in America, all right? And nobody's entitled to any role. You know, you, you, he's been in the office for ten years. He's, you know, had a good run. There's a lot of great achievements that he's accomplished for residents. So people have a lot to be proud of. However, the distinction between myself and Jack is that I think I'm offering a higher level of service. Let me give you an example. In twenty twenty-one, you're, the Brockton City Council approved the largest debt expenditure in the city of Brockton. It was an unfunded pension liability of three hundred million dollars. And when you want to ask, and, and when you ask yourself, well, what, you know, why are your taxes going up? One of the main reasons why your taxes are going up is because of that loan note. Now, before the city council approved that, those monies, they actually approved three hundred and sixty-five million dollars of a loan aid, no, loan note. And what happened, the question was like, well, why, why do you need three sixty-five million? How, maybe, how do you know you don't need just a hundred million dollars? And so Jack and the city council relied on some feedback from the, uh, Brockton Retirement Board. But you have to remember if it, or if you, if, if anyone looks into this, you'll see that Brockton Retirement Board has performed in the bottom quartile. Of all municipal pension fund providers in the state of Massachusetts, and that's over a thirty-six year time horizon. So we already know they're not good at managing money. We, and so now we're relying on them to determine how much money we needed. Of a loan note for that. Now, well, here's what happened. The city council approved three hundred and sixty-five million dollars, including Jack Lally. Didn't ask any questions, when, for something you really want to ask a lot of questions for. Didn't ask any questions. And then what happened was that before the money, the transaction was really needed, where the ci- uh, city of Brockton would go out to the market. And issue bonds in order to get the raise of three sixty-five million, the CFO came back to the city council and said, you know what, actually. We don't need three sixty-five, we just need three hundred million. So that's a difference of sixty-five million dollars. But the city council was ready to prove it because why? Cause the city council, unfortunately, they just don't have the expertise. Now, I approached Jack Lally before they did the approval and I tried to give him guidance because I work in the business of finance. I've worked in finance for over twenty-one years, working for investment companies, insurance companies and banks. So if I don't know something and it's important for, and I have to be a fiduciary, in this case, the city council fiduciary. I'll ask someone who does know. And I asked Jack, Jack, can we just, can the city council employ an auditor? Who's a subject matter expert on this topic for a day to do a cross-examination of the Brockton Retirement Board's request for this. Three hundred and sixty-five million before you approve it. Jack looked at me and just rolled his eyes. Now, the point versus giving, taking good counsel, which was what he should have done. Now, what's happened is the city councils approved that money and, and the risk is that you're, 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 now your taxes are going up. But here's the next risk. What are you going to do the next time the Brockton Retirement Board comes back and asks for more money because of poor performance? The city, well, if it's Jack Lally, he's just going to prove it when, ask it, uh, without asking any questions, which is going to increase your taxes. And you don't even know if that's the right decision, if that's the right amount you need approved. Whereas myself, I'm going to make sure we get to the bottom of it. We make sure that we really need three, and if we do borrow three hundred million, we're going to want to update every single quarter on, on, is that money? Are we, are we getting a higher rate return or are we losing money? Or are we losing money? And you know, since, since they approved that money, the city council, including Jack Lally's, never asked for the Brockton Retirement Board to come before them to talk about the performance of those monies, they'd never done it. And that's because they just don't know, they just not paying attention, they're just, you know, you, when you evaluate somebody's performance, you gotta evaluate them based on their actions. And right now, Jack Lally just hasn't been providing you the quality of services that the city of Brockton deserves, but I'm here to make a difference.
Alright, man, I gotta thank Jamal, we went over the fifteen minutes that we were gonna have him on. But again, the booth here is an open forum for all politicians, so Jamal's the first one to come on and take advantage of coming on here. Um, I know by November, this, this show is about to get fast and furious in the city of Brockton, especially now with Mayor Sullivan not running, so anybody out there who is running for office here in the city of Brockton or anywhere. Um, this, this show is an open forum for anyone who wants to come on that's running. Um, we'll put your, Jamal's banner will now be at the end of the show in the flyers until November. Um, and we'll see, you know, right now Moses is the only solid one out there that's announced that he's running for mayor. Um, I'm waiting to see if Fred Fontaine is gonna respond, Jerome Bradley, Daron Court, let's see if he responds. There's some rumors out there about Jeff Thompson maybe throwing his hat in. I've heard some rumors that Michelle Dubois may step back from the state and may try to go for mayor. It's gonna get real interesting people, but I gotta thank you Jamal for coming on the show and thank everybody in the chat, good stuff. And, um, anything you wanna say before you get out of here?
Yeah, one thing I wanna give a shout out for anyone, uh, whether you, anyone who's in the city of Brockton, if you want to restore that land, uh, that should be a sports complex, if you wanna store it to green space, to a beautiful park, please reach out to me. Um, if you wanna work with us to try and end that environmental disaster that the city council has neglected and let be a plight in Ward six and the mayor's not addressing, please reach out to me. I'd love to hear from you, um, we need all the support, we need signatures of registered voters to demonstrate to the city council and to the mayor that the will of the people is that we need to take that land back. The thirty plus acres of land and restore it to green space, a beautiful park, once known as Removea Park. And let's do it for the kids that live in the city of Brockton so they have a beautiful place they can go to, thank you.
Right, good stuff, we're gonna take a quick break, real quick break, we're gonna be right back with more booth after this, here we go, hold tight.
Thank you Keith.
I smoke, I drink, I do my thing, these bitches they've hated, so you know I gots to make it plain. Don't do cocaine with your chick, my main, we stick together, true forever, yeah, you know we bang. I miss those days, wish it was easy, if only I made it, this shit on repeat. Now that I done upgraded, I been upstate and y'all think I'm playing. And I got a hit now for these weak assholes who think I ain't slaying. Try me, try me and I probably end up laughing, cause I never back down, I'm that chick with a clean ass whip, I don't need that shit, cause I got my own now. I get hurt, I get tired of fussing, fighting, guess I gotta crack down, don't mess with me, cause on everything, I'mma have to bring the whole city out. Try me, try me and I probably end up laughing, cause I never back down, I'm that chick with a clean ass whip, I don't need that shit, cause I got my own now. I get hurt, I get tired of fussing, fighting, guess I gotta crack down, don't mess with me, cause on everything, I'mma have to bring the whole city out. These hoes, they know I'm on, it's my show, I know I'm better Gucci sweater, Louis V my bros. I chose this road, cause I know I'm cold, I'm on the level, you can't handle, you can't steal this flow. I swear, I want people to feel me, but I don't care if they don't, cause this is the real me. How can I give up, ain't it's not enough to make them stop what I'm saying? And I got a hit now for these weak assholes who think I ain't slaying. Try me, try me and I probably end up laughing, cause I never back down, I'm that chick with a clean ass whip, I don't need that shit, cause I got my own now. I get hurt, I get tired of fussing, fighting, guess I gotta crack down, don't mess with me, cause on everything, I'mma have to bring the whole city out. Try me, try me and I probably end up laughing, cause I never back down, I'm that chick with a clean ass whip, I don't need that shit, cause I got my own now. I get hurt, I get tired of fussing, fighting, guess I gotta crack down, don't mess with me, cause on everything, I'mma have to bring the whole city out.
See, I'm really getting tired of you, wanna do everything but tell the truth, they be sleeping on me really when I'm in the booth. Sensational, yes tasteful, insatiable, my name baby, come on girl, let me drive crazy. Done fighting, I wanna fuck tonight, so what's up tonight, I'm all dressed in white, I don't snort the white, but we can blow the green. Break inside a new money team, sophisticated, so it may look mean, I'm all about my cream, I'm trying to chase my dream. God got me, so I'll never stop, keep it real, never turn and pop, ambitious mind like I'm Pimple Pop, longest cam, goddess will never flop.
Try me, try me and I probably end up laughing, cause I never down, I'm that chick with a clean ass whip, I don't need that shit, cause I got my own now. I get hurt, I get tired of fussing, fighting, guess I gotta crack down, don't mess with me, cause on everything, I'mma have to bring the whole city out. Try me, try me and I probably end up laughing, cause I never back down, I'm that chick with a clean ass whip, I don't need that shit, cause I got my own now. I get hurt, I get tired of fussing, fighting, guess I gotta crack down, don't mess with me, cause on everything, I'mma have to bring the whole city out. Blame me, that be. I smoke, I drink, I do my thing, these bitches they've hated, so you know I gots to make it plain. Don't do cocaine with your chick, my main, we stick together, true forever, yeah, you know we bang. I miss those days, wish it was easy, if only I made it, this shit on re-
Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you, back here in the booth broadcasting live for the city champions, I gotta thank Jamal for coming on the show with me, Jamal Brathwaite. And, uh, it was a good, good episode, good stuff and, um, hold on here, what's going on? Please tell me that, up again during the break. Like we're still alive, looks like we're going out. Jamal's here, Jamal's in the chat, what's going on, Monkey, we're in wellness, thank you, thank you, thank you everybody for tuning in to the show. Uh, I gotta blow along here, cause I gotta be on turnbuckles and spilt liquor at nine thirty. So Jamal, thank you for coming on, voteforjamal.com, let's get into the first story of the news booth. Actually, that was, uh, the only other story in the news booth was Jamal was on, let's get into the entertainment booth, actually. Um, in the entertainment booth, Robert Orsi, fifty-one years old, he was the screenwriter and producer for the Transformers films, all those were, you know, pretty much hit films, he passed away at the age of fifty-one. Tough one, tough one, tough one, also in the entertainment booth, hey, let me know your thoughts out here in the chat, who's watching the chat in the entertainment booth, here's a rumor. As you guys know, the double oh seven trademark and the, the, the movies and stuff. The brand has been, you know, the, has been taken away from the family. Um, the movie studio now owns the rights and stuff to double oh seven and James Bond. The rumor out there right now is that Christopher Nolan is the front runner to take over the double oh seven franchise, I, I like this. Granted, Christopher Nolan has done things like Dark Knight series, he's done, he's done, he's won Academy Awards. If there was anybody who would put their own touch and spin on double oh seven, Christopher Nolan, I like it. I like it, I think if Christopher Nolan takes over the WW, um, I'm getting ready for wrestling. If Christopher Nolan takes over double oh seven franchise for the next batch of films. I think we would be expecting a darker James Bond maybe. I don't know, you guys, if you're in the chat, I, I think if, I think if Christopher Nolan takes over double oh seven, I think we're gonna see action. But I think we're gonna see, I think we see a darker James Bond. So we, we've always had this gentleman, James Bond, that, you know, he's likable, he can be humorous at times. But I think Christopher Nolan's spin, his touch would be to bring kinda that anti-hero, that stone cold, you know, the bad guy that everybody likes. I think, I think we're gonna, I think if we see Christopher Nolan take over double oh seven, I think that's what we see. I think we see a darker James Bond and I'm good with that. Um, I, I, we've had a great run of charismatic James Bonds. We, we, we've had this run, we really haven't had a dark James Bond. I, I, I would like that, I think that's a, that's a friggin definite way to, to kick off this new branding of double oh seven. I'd love it, I love it, I think, I think Christopher Nolan would be a great choice. You guys in the chat, if you think Christopher Nolan would be a great choice to take over this double oh seven franchise, drop in the chat, cause I, I love it, I'm down for that. Let's get into the sports booth, in the sports booth, big congratulations to Matty C Sports. Matty C ran in the St. Patty's Day five K Rhode Island last weekend, set a personal best. And he's running again, coming up in Vermont, so big ups to Matty C Sports for you and me. And also here in Brockton, congrats to Louis Andre, Andre, he broke his own state record in the fifty-five meter hurdles, he ran a seven point two nine seconds, breaking his older record and setting a new personal best in the fifty-five meter hurdles, but this kid's a beast. This kid's a beast in the high jump, this kid's a beast in the hundred meters. Um, I believe his time in the USA was seventh, which means that Mr. Lucas Andre, if you're, if you're pushing seventh in the country for times, that, you're talking, you're talking Olympics now. You're, you're talking Olympic stuff now. Um, that would be great to see Mr. Lucas Andre making that USA Olympic team with those times, being seventh in the country. Right now, a, as a senior in high school is, is crazy, is crazy. So I might try to reach out to Lucas and try to get Lucas on this show. Also in the sports booth, the Pats have signed Harold Landry from the Titans linebacker. And then they went and they spent some money on the Super Bowl hero from the, from the Philadelphia Eagles, my son's team. They went and got linebacker Milton Williams who was given Patrick Mahomes headaches all Super Bowl. They signed him for a hundred and four million dollars, I believe it's a four, maybe six year deal. Um, no, four, I think it's a four year deal with sixty-three million guaranteed. So when you see these guys get a hundred and four million, um, that's not the guaranteed money, the guaranteed money is the sixty-three million, if something happens, they've gotta pay that sixty-three million regardless, or they can, you know, they cut him, so, um, shoring up the defense, but we need, we need O linemen. And I granted, I know we can get those guys in the draft, but we do need a solid O line. Also in this report, you heard me talking about this now, now here we go. You heard me here on the booth saying this way, way, way back, when the college season ended, when all this talk was talking. I said it, I said Colorado Buffaloes Travis is coming here, Travis is coming to the Patriots. That's who they're gonna draft. This is a guy that's gonna come in, he's gonna commit himself as part of the secondary and wide receiver. Um, he'll come as a wide receiver and he can play both sides of the ball. The Pats have been known for that. Mike Vrabel knows that, Mike Vrabel was a two-sided player. He filled in at tight end and burnt the Jets twice in one game while we were there, playing tight end. So Mike Vrabel knows about the benefits of having a player that can play both sides of the ball. Now you got a guy like Travis who can come in here, play at wide receiver, but then also go across from a guy that we had was cornerback that was probably one of the best cornerbacks. Now you solidify that, that's, look, Travis, you can come. You can come here, I don't care, we can draft you. So we could do that, uh, let's see here, let's get into Trump troubles. Oh no, actually, we're in the legal booth, we're actually in the legal booth with this story because Trump lost another one in the legal booth. Trump lost the federal aid freeze legal battle, he now must pay out the funds. And that's like, I wanna say it was like two point three billion dollars, he wants to pull out and also in the legal booth. Uh, RFK Junior wants the FDA to rethink the UF, US food supply, well, RFK, you know what you really should be doing, you should be on a plane to F-ing Texas to handle the measles outbreak of about a thousand plus people down there. You know, the people who didn't believe in vaccinations during COVID, you know, not that they're all got measles now and they just had their first death down there in Texas, RFK, maybe you should be going to Texas. Instead of rethinking the FDA and the US food supply, buddy, that's what I gotta say. Alright, let's get into the Trump troubles at eight twenty-nine, I've got an interview to close out with, uh, the ABA has now spoken, let me get this up here so you guys can see this. I thought I might have put this in the, in the system. Uh, the ABA, the American Bar Association is, is, for the second time this year, the American Bar Association felt compelled to put up a statement in regards to the comments that President Trump and Musk are having in regards to what I just mentioned about them losing court cases. Uh, we speak today on behalf of the legal profession and our members who seek to live by the oath each took upon the admission to the law, to the bar. Uh, we reject efforts to, under efforts to remake the legal profession into something that rewards those who agree with the government and punishes those who do not. So in the nutshell, the ABA, the, the ABA is calling out President Trump for what they accuse the Democrats of doing. You know, President Trump said if, if, if Harris gets in, they're gonna weaponize government and they're gonna do this and do that. Everything that they have claimed the Democrats were going to do, they're doing. They've weaponized government, they've gone after people as, as personal attacks. And you know, they've done this thing with the AP News right now, you know, AP News is one of the most upstanding news outlets out there, yet today there was a nasty go back and forth between an, an AP writer and Kaylee today, there was a, there was a real bad one today. Um, they've been crapping all over AP News, why? And, and, and this is craziness, the reason why they've been crapping and the White House has been crapping on AP News is because AP News will not recognize the Gulf of America, they are sticking with Gulf of Mexico and they're standing on that hill and they're not giving up. And because AP Wire is standing on the Gulf of Mexico is because they said outside of the US, pretty much everybody else is still referring to it as the Gulf of Mexico. So the AP Wire is standing on that, they don't care that Google changed it. Um, and they're standing on that and because they won't agree to referring to it as Gulf of America, um, they're not in good standings with the White House. So the AP is having their freedom of the press stomped on because someone with a temper tantrum is upset that they won't refer to Gulf of America. It's Gulf of Mexico, it's craziness, it's craziness, so the ABA has now listed this statement. It's crazy, the ABA represents lawyers and this is why I said you have to watch SCOTUS on this. Because what SCOTUS ends up doing is going to decide a lot for this country, so I, I'm curious to see what's gonna happen. Um, the ABA releasing statements like this is crazy stuff, crazy stuff. This lets you really know where we're at in this country, it's a very serious moment. Also in the news booth, in the Trump trouble segment, Mark Connie is Canada's newest prime minister and for anyone who thought that someone was gonna come in here and be polar opposite of Justin Trudeau, who has stepped down and has gotten out of Canada's- who has stepped down and has gotten out of Canada's prime minister seat, nope, this guy gets in and the first thing he does is go right after Trump and pisses Trump off. And, um, he backed the fact that, you know, that they're refusing to take products, as I talked on this show. Ontario, one of, one of the provinces is no longer accepting, you know, Kentucky bourbon. It's not for sale in Ontario alone. Ontario alone was 1.2 billion dollars in export for the US or Kentucky. They lost that. And President Trump's answer was, was whatever we lost, we can make it up by selling it here. Hey dumbass, dumbass, you're not gonna make up 1.2 billion dollars in sales in America, in, in 50 states. You lost an entire province of Canada in sales. You're not making up the 1.2 billion you just lost in annual sales. And I hear MAGA people saying, well, yeah, we will, we'll make that up, we'll, we'll, we'll just sell that. No, they didn't, you're not. Hence the reason why they just laid off 650 workers. Cause they just lost all that money, gone, gone. And, and, and Mark Connie is not having it. So this is gonna get real interesting. And Trump today threatened Canada. He said that if they, you know, if this tariff trade war goes down, um, he says, um, he, he threatened annexation. So in other words, this is a guy who's, who's talking about kind of just taking the country over with, with tariffs and bashing them. And then i- it's crazy, it's craziness. Um, also in Trump troubles, Elon Musk Doge has ordered the sale of the Freedom Riders Museum, which located in Montgomery, Alabama. So this is one of the things they're doing right now in Washington, they're taking the Black Lives Matter. I wasn't a fan of the Black Lives Matter. I, I was, I was, I was a supporter of the Black Lives Matter message. I wasn't a supporter of the Black Lives Matter organization. And one of the reasons why I didn't support the organization as a whole is because I felt what I felt. And thankfully, what I felt was true because stories all came out later on across the country, how crooked some of these BLM organizers were, which is why I hated that. Um, the message was pure, but the organization, the people behind it were bums. So, um, Doge has ordered the sell-off of the Montgomery Bus Station this weekend. They reenacted the march across through Selma and across the bridge. Um, as you guys know, the, this is where civil, this is where the birthright and the fight of civil rights began, was here. This was it. This was what moment inspired MLK, Rosa Parks refusing to sit in the back of the bus. Um, trash workers not getting their workers' rights and, and, and dying in the back of trucks trying to hide from rain. Um, this is where all, Montgomery, Alabama, all them southern states is where it began. And, and now this was one of these, you know, government museums. Um, Doge has now ordered this museum to be sold off to whomever. So whoever would buy it would come in and guess what? That piece of American history will be gone, sold off, no longer there. And, um, this is exactly the type of crap that they're, that they're trying to do and trying to erase. Um, you know, while you're selling off a piece of American history that shows our growth and shows what we put behind us, yet you want to bring racist South Africans here from South Africa, push the whole apartheid, don't even get me started. But it's there. But the honeymoon is also seemingly to be over. Um, Trump had a press conference announcing that Musk can't fire employees. It could be face service, it could be lip service, but he's saying Musk can't fire employees and we no longer are going to do things with a chainsaw, we're gonna do things with a scalpel. Trump has said, but it's too late for that, it's too late for that. You've already got a ton of egg on your face because you fired people and now you're calling people back, which I'm gonna say right here, which should have been in the legal booth, I'm going to say that this is probably going to turn into one of the biggest class action lawsuits that this government has ever seen. Um, you've got people here who've been fired from their jobs and then they're called back weeks later. That's undue stress that was caused to them. That's a class action. So right now Musk can't fire employees, Trump tells cabinet secretaries, he's no longer in charge, which is why they put, um, this other lady, Amy Gleason as the admin of Doge now. And yes, they took more receipts down over the weekend that they can't back up. So it is, it is bad, bad news for Musk. And a lot of this stuff is coming right from Trump. I see a lot of people out here on my chat saying that I'm spreading misinformation when most of this information is coming right from President Trump's office. This isn't misinformation, this is coming right from the horse's mouth. Also Tesla lost a one, 127 billion today in the stock market. 127 billion Tesla has been crashing. And here's the thing, the shareholders, I wouldn't be surprised if they're sitting behind the scenes looking for a way to buy out all his shares and just get out. Um, China, there was a China stock group, car group, um, they blame Musk for this crash in the stock. They said that, you know, in, in layman's terms, um, if you're a CEO of a company, you shouldn't get involved in politics the way that, that he did. Because when you sell cars to people, you're selling cars to people on both sides of the fence. And once you side with someone politically, you lose those people who have supported your brand, which is what we're seeing right now. It's funny, weird, because you know, before, before Tesla and, and, and Trump getting in office, everybody was bashing EVs and people with EVs and all of this stuff. And you're woke, cause you're driving, and now all of a sudden the MAGA people are having all this sympathy. It's crazy, they're all got sympathy for Musk and i- i- it's, it's crazy, it's insane stuff. So last topic of the night, we're gonna close out with, it's 8:40. Uh, Mayor Robert Sullivan has announced he is not running for reelection in 2025. Big major announcement, held a press conference. And what I want to do here is I want to show you guys the exclusive press conference, uh, with his message to the city of Brockton. And about 27 minutes long, but I wanted to make sure that we got this out here. And I gotta give a big thanks to my man Kevin Tochi. Kevin Tochi gave me the okay to use the footage, which was property of, uh, 95.9 WATD. And, uh, Monday Night Talk with Kevin Tochi, make sure to check him out. And, um, what we're gonna do here, we're gonna show this video and then we're gonna close out the show so I can get ready for turnbuckles and spilt like a podcast at 9:30. But here it is, here is the Mayor Sullivan. And what, he's got about 10 months left, so eight months left. So, um, this is him with the major announcement and, uh, get this up for you guys. And then we'll close out the show after this. Here we go.
And I want to thank each and every one of you for being here today. Uh, we've done many, many events here at City Hall since I've been the mayor. Uh, and we always start off with welcome you to the city hall, which again is the people's building. Uh, I am so proud to be joined here at the podium by the dream team in any mayor's office, uh, really in terms of people coming to work each and every day. Started and exemplified by my chief of staff, Sidney Marrow, uh, Stephanie and Emma and Jasmine and Courtney and Kevin, uh, Suzanne. Uh, John is not here today and Joe is, is actually just going home. But I'd like to, uh, I'd like to start off, uh, first of all, uh, by a couple of words. And I really truly appreciate each and every one of you being here. Uh, we have great city employees, we have great school employees. We have folks in the private business here and nonprofits, we have our county officials as well. Uh, just really excited to, to be able to share some thoughts, uh, with all of you today. Uh, just several weeks ago down the hall, uh, when the Brockton Rocks came to the city of Champions to announce the new management team and commitment to professional baseball here in the city of Brockton. There was stated by the new Rocks general manager, Sean Riley, that quote, the revival of this team goes hand in hand with the revival of the city of Brockton. Sean truly got that right, he really got it right that day. Ever since I took off, uh, the oath of office in January of 2020, I've dedicated myself and I have led an amazing team of professionals, dedicated professionals toward the goal of revival and renaissance. The willingness of the Rocks ownership, uh, including Red Sox Hall of Famer Jim Rice to invest in our city is a tangible example of how that revival and renaissance is real. From Campello to Montello, from the east side to the west side of our city, our beloved Brockton, Massachusetts has truly undergone and continues to undergo a revitalization that will define our great city for the next generation and many more to come. Millions of dollars of private investment coupled with millions of dollars of public investment are transforming our city of Champions each and every day. As the 50th mayor of the city of Brockton, it's been my honor, my privilege and the highlight of more than 19 years of public service to serve in this office for you, with you, and because of you. I said during my inaugural ad- address, uh, January 6th of 2020, that we are truly one Brockton, one community, one city. The last five years, including our successes and our challenges have proven just that. When I assumed that, that, uh, the office on that day in January of 2020, I promised to each and every one of you and those that were there that day that I'm here today that I would lead our city with collaboration and teamwork. Who could have imagined and known that day that we would be tested just several weeks later with the emergence of a worldwide pandemic that would claim the lives of so many Brocktonians. But collaboration and teamwork defined our response to the pandemic. I met weekly with the leaders of the local hospitals and our healthcare providers. With my team, we distributed over $2 million in pandemic relief funds to lift up our nonprofits while lifting up our community. We emerged from the COVID-19 pandemic stronger than before and closer than ever before. And that commitment to teamwork and togetherness is to find every project and every priority during my three terms as the mayor of the city of Brockton. Just steps from here, we will soon open the most modern and magnificent public safety complex in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. One singular magnificent building to house four unbelievable departments. For a generation, previous mayors attempted to build a new building that would combine our police and our fire departments. For a generation, that dream fell short, but we have succeeded. We have achieved that goal because we have worked together and we have achieved that goal without increasing taxes. This advanced facility will also house our emergency management, Brockton Emergency Management, BEMA, and our IT department, our information technology departments. It will also proudly feature outside of the wonderful building, a peace garden. I wish to thank our partners in Suffolk Construction and look forward to the ribbon cutting that will happen in late summer, and that's a promise. In the year 2023, when a school deficit presented an existential crisis for our city and our community, the need to once again come together as one Brockton was greater than ever. And that's just what we did. Yet there were difficult nights, there were sleepless nights, believe me, there was conflict. And there were times when it truly seemed like we would not be able to get out of that and the state would take us over. However, through collaboration and teamwork and working together, we succeeded again because we worked together. Today, our city and our schools are working together in a new era of collaboration. And we are planning a renovation of Brockton High School, which will once again put DHS at its rightful place as the finest high school in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, if not the entire nation. I have since, I have said since embarking on this journey of a lifetime, that the title of mayor has been the honor of my lifetime as a kid that grew up in Brockton. Uh, but the title of dad and husband is the most prized label that I possess. Being a dad to Tommy, Grace and Will, and being a husband to Maria are my most important cherished titles. And it's my most important work. While our work here at City Hall and beyond is not yet complete, it is my time now to reset and refocus on my most important job to be a dad and a husband. My My family has been all in for the last five years. They picked up the slack when necessary, uh, while I missed, uh, games and plays and dinners and family gatherings, times that I'll never get back. When I was elected in the year 2005 to the city council to serve as a councillor at large, Maria and I had no children, none whatsoever. We were newly married, just two years. Now next year, our oldest is off to college. Time flies and it's been truly an honor to work 14 years as a councillor at large and, and five years here as the mayor of Brockton. But I've said many, many times that the mayor's position is not and should not be a lifetime job. It is time for me now to rejoin my family and to be a dad and a husband. As a result, I'm officially announcing today that I will not seek reelection to the office of mayor of the city of Brockton. I will conclude my term in January of next year, when a new mayor is sworn in, whoever he or she may be. I would like to thank my family for their love and their support. My wife, Maria, and if you know Maria, she's a special person. She's been my partner, my councillor, my advisor and my dear friend. I would not, I would not be standing here before you today without her love and, and strength on a daily basis. And to my three children, Tommy, Grace and Will, I, I just want to thank them from the bottom of my heart because now's the time for me to be their dad 24/7 and not the mayor of the city of Brockton. But I also have to thank my own parents, I'm fortunate to still have my parents here in Brockton and with us, Bob and Sue Sullivan, who have been my campaign managers since it all started 19 years ago. And I have two sisters, Kara Briggs, who's a teacher here at Brockton, and my sister Suzanne, who's an assistant US attorney, who have always been there for me along with my brother Ryan, who's a lawyer down in Connecticut. And my in-laws, Anthony, Lorraine, Louise, they have always, always dedicated themselves to my pursuit. But I also want to personally take a moment to thank all of the dedicated supporters that have been Team Sullivan for so many years. Standing, holding signs on freezing cold days and out there in the heat of the summer. I truly just want to say thank you for what you have done because together we have made Brockton a better place for all. To my amazing team in the mayor's office, and that's what I've said since day one, they're not my employees, my staff, they're my team members. Particularly the woman to my right, the world's finest chief of staff, Mrs. Sidney Marrow. I want to just thank you all. Each day Jasmine and John and Joe and Courtney and Stephanie and Kevin and Emma and Suzanne, they show up and walk through those doors and whatever comes through that door, some days is tragedy, some days is triumph. But they face each day with resolve, with teamwork and with a smile. So I personally just want to thank each and every one of you for what you do each and every day. I have to thank, uh, my wonderful team of department heads. I want to thank the city clerk, Tim Cruz, and each and every one of you dedicated city employees and school employees. You all personally share in our successes and it has been an honor to work with each and every one of you. I especially want to take a moment to thank Dr. Troy Clarkson, our city CFO, and Megan Bridges, attorney Megan Bridges, our city solicitor. These two individuals have helped me profoundly each and every day. Megan and Troy, I just wanted to take a moment to thank both of you. However, as a team, we got 10 more months, let's keep going. We have to keep working, this isn't over, this isn't a funeral. We have to keep the progress going, the proverbial train going down that track. You know, we, we collective, we have to make a better Brockton. You know, we, we collective, we have to make a better Brockton for all, and we can achieve that in 10 months. We may not achieve each and every one of our, our goals, but we are heading in a trajectory that cannot fail us in generations to come. I also just want to make it clear, as a human being and as a person, this, this is not an easy decision for me to make, it's, it's, it's not. I've, I've thought about it for a while, I've talked to Maria and the kids and my parents and my in-laws and close confidants, it's just, it's, it's a difficult thing to do. But I am truly proud of the work that we have done together, and I know, I know that we will continue the unprecedented and generational progress that we've made thus far. Sometimes that progress was made in spite of daunting and seemingly insurmountable odds, but together we emerged stronger from the pandemic, together we survived a serious financial crisis, and together we invested like never before in our infrastructure. I stand before you today in this proud and stately City Hall, a special building with a record of accomplishments and progress that will impact our city for the next generation and beyond. For the first time in 175 years, this great City Hall will soon provide fresh air for our workers and residents with over a $14 million investment here at City Hall. And just earlier this week, our Mary Cruz Kennedy Senior Senate Counsel on Aging opened with a 5,000-square-foot addition, and that was at a $7.7 million investment. In addition, our War Memorial Building, dedicated to our proud veterans, those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, those that have served or continue to serve, was enhanced and reimagined with a $4 million investment. This past summer, our residents enjoyed, enjoyed a newly upgraded Cosgrove Pool on the east side with a $6 million investment. Parks and playgrounds all around the seven wards have seen millions of dollars in investment. All of these improvements were thanks to the assistance of our federal partners and our current county partners through the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. When these funds were announced, I remember sitting in my office with Troy, and I made a decision to invest in the city's future, so that, that our investment will outlive us all and create a better Brockton for decades to come. That has been my focus as your mayor, and it will continue to be my focus as Citizen Bob Sullivan. Last summer, we proudly unveiled a statue for our champ, Marvelous Marvin Hagler. This fitting tribute to the best middleweight boxer of all time was, was long overdue, and I was so proud to have been able to work with our partners to make it a reality. A lot of previous people had said, "No, we're not going to do that." I said, "Yes, we are going to do that," much like when we acquired the pride flag and the trans flag. We do the right thing because we set the tone here in the city of Brockton. In addition, I asked our law department, Solicitor Bridges and her wonderful dedicated team of lawyers, true professional, it's a law firm here in the confines of City Hall, to move forward on what we call a friendly taking, so that the famous and historic Liberty Tree could be legally and officially owned by the city of Brockton because it was privately owned. That request was achieved through the efforts of the law department, and we are now the lawful owner. We will continue to showcase the famed Sycamore Tree so that we can educate those about its significance and the relationship to Mr. Frederick Douglass himself. I've said to many of you since my very first day walking in this office as mayor, that our greatest asset in 02301 and 02302 are our people, those that live and work in Brockton. As a Brockton native, I've gotten to know many people over my 19 years as an elected official, again, 14 years as a councillor-at-large, five as the city council president, and now five as mayor. But during these last five years, I've truly witnessed the best that our city has to offer through its people, diverse, welcoming, inclusive people, our people that travel from around the world to come to Brockton and call it home for the next generation, to better their lives and the lives of their kids and their grandkids. Through all of you, our vibrant city is diverse, our rich cultural heritage, our thriving communities, particularly our Cape Verdean and Haitian and Nigerian and Angolan and Latinx friends that have called Brockton home, so many more that come to Brockton, and I've said it many times, Brockton is a mosaic, and it's truly the best city in the United States. And what motivates me are the people that come into this City Hall each and every day looking for help, and we provide that help because we are in the people business, and that really what has triggered me to continue to serve in a public service capacity. Transparency in government has always been an extension of the integrity that I have tried to bring to my public service. The more we share with people we serve, the better product we deliver, it's as simple as that, and also the more credibility we create. For the last five years, the city of Brockton has been awarded the Distinguished Budget Award from the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, the highest award given for the government transparency in North America. I became my mayor five years, and for the last five years, through Troy and his team, we've gotten that award, it's a distinguished award. I'm going to give you and your team a round of applause, Dr. Clarkson. I am extremely proud of the team that we have assembled to win this distinguished award. We're more proud of our mutual commitment to telling the story of our budget and policy priorities in a way that connects our residents, our business owners, from across the cultural spectrum to our local government. The same team implemented and worked together for more than a year and a half, and it was a team made up of industry and public finance professionals to solve the conundrum of our pension liability, potentially crippling financial burden that would more than double our annual payment to the Brockton Retirement Board. Under my leadership and the efforts of the team, we championed pension obligation bond program. We issued $300 million in pension obligation bonds, saving the taxpayers more than $95 million over 15 years. That savings allowed us to borrow the initial $98 million for the Public Safety Building without raising any taxes whatsoever. These innovative and transparent approaches has truly been the hallmark of, of my time here as mayor, thinking outside the box, listening and learning from others, and executing a plan that's going to make sense long-term. To be able to, in essence, refinance our debt liability and save $95 million is now considered a national example. And Dr. Clarkson and I were invited last year to Manhattan to talk to the industries, not just in the east coast bond industry, but worldwide bond industry. So we're doing something right here in the city of Brockton. So I have worked with dozens of dedicated public servants during my tenure, but a few deserve a special mention as I begin my final leg of my mayoral journey. Congressman Steve Lynch has been a tireless advocate for our city. He's never said no to any request that I've asked of him. He's always been there at the public celebrations and at the private problem-solving sessions. Your Senator Ed Markey and your Senator Elizabeth Warren are also true friends of Brockton and share in our success. Former Boston Mayor Marty Walsh was a mentor and friend to me in my early days as mayor when we would do Sunday night Zooms along with Kim Driscoll, who we affectionately now call Lieutenant Governor, but was the mayor of Salem when, when I first took office. They each have brought a focus to me about addressing the needs of the city, but also the Commonwealth as a whole. Brockton would look totally different today without the contributions of these giants of, of public service. But I also have to take a moment to thank Governor Maureen Healy, former Governor Charlie Baker, Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito, our state delegation, Senator Mike Brady, Representative Michelle Dubois, Representative Rita Mendez, Representative Bridget Plouffe, former Representative Claire Cronin, Ambassador from the United States to Ireland, and former Representative Jerry Cassidy. Our county officials, our county commissioners, Valenzuela and Handley and Wright, our Treasurer, Brian, our Register of Deeds, Buckley, our Clerk, Creedon, our DA, Cruz, Sheriff McDonald, Register of Probate, McDonough, our city councillors, each and every one of them, past and present, our school committee members, each and every one of them, past and present. I, I just want to personally thank each and every one of you for helping me do a better job to be mayor of Brockton. Each and every one of you bring a different approach that I value, and each and one of you are public servants that I would not be able to, you know, make Brockton the place that we all wanted to be without each and every one of you. Lastly, I have to thank all of our medical providers, our higher education and local education providers, Brockton Public Schools, Trinity Catholic Academy, Cardinal Spelman, Southeastern Regional Vocational Technical High School. Did I say Cardinal Spelman? I better say it again, Cardinal Spelman. But also our clergy, our pastors, our nonprofit organizations, our social service providers, our businesses, our businesses are the lifeblood of our community, our youth service providers, and our community civic organizations for your dedication and collaboration working with me over the years. You have honored me with your professionalism, with your drive, with your determination, and your efforts. The city is so fortunate to have each and every one of you working tirelessly on a daily basis within our city of Brockton and beyond. I want to personally thank, again, President Clark, Bridgewater State University, Father Denning, John Denning at Stonehill College, and President Bill Mitchell at Massasoia Community College, that have continued to work with me to help the next generation get the quality of education that each and every one of them deserve. As I begin this last year as your mayor, mayor of the city of champions, I pledge that I will continue to move forward together because we are truly better together. As a kid from Brockton who grew up on Wellington Street in War II, I thank you for this honor of a lifetime. Onward as one Brockton, may God bless our city of champions, our Commonwealth, and the United States of America. Thank you, each and every one of you. So I, I do, I do want to thank Brockton Community Axis for being here. I know Chris Helms from the Enterprise is here, Kevin Tocchi from WATD is here, Mark from the Enterprise is here. But I personally just want to thank each and every one of you on a Friday afternoon to take time to come here. It means a lot to me personally, it means a lot to my team, but this is the Brockton that I know. And again, 10 months is a long time, it's not like I'm leaving today, but we have a lawful work to do. So as my nana from Ballyhannis in County Mayo, Ireland, used to always say, "Bobby, roll up the sleeves and get the job done." So let's get at it. Thank you very much, everybody.[1479.75]